Good evening, everyone. I'm on.
Testing, testing.
Check, check. I don't.
Testing, testing. They're not on.
Check, check.
Yeah, right.
If he would look at his schools, the schools are not teaching anything, right?
Yeah, right.
We've got, we've got, we only have so many things and we've got so much material.
That's right.
Teaching English and science and history and all that stuff. Far more.
I agree. No, you don't, because you know you want to make sure.
Got issue. They're working on it.
You know, join in and make a nice bit.
Turn the mics on.
We need to sit picture like it happened. This is not changing. You can't change this.
Okay, good.
When all else fails, cut it off and cut it back on, all right?
Well, they get it worked out.
I don't know. Who?
So we're good on audio. Okay. Ms. Sitch, can you hear us? Rachel.
Rachel, now she froze.
Rachel, can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay, all right. We're having some camera difficulties. You can see they've got a small camera at the back tech desk, so you might have a little trouble seeing us, but you can hear us okay? Are you still there, Rachel?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. Anybody that's online, we are having camera issues, so they're working on that, but we're going to go ahead and start the meeting. We're just a few minutes behind, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. Everyone will please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, good evening to everyone on our, it's already March. I'm going to embarrass her, but Tiffany is glad to have you back.
Yay.
Yeah, we miss you. If you haven't seen a picture of the new little man, she's got plenty.
Yeah.
And good evening to the rest of our board members. Everyone's had a chance to review the minutes of our February 6 regularly scheduled meeting. We have a motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
We actually do, and this is already reflected in your agenda, but the one you sent was missing item 3.7, an update on the Alternative Learning Center presented by Sanji Bell, Alternative School Director and Brian Beck, Alternative School Facilitator, Success Coordinator. So they'll be during the superintendent's report, item 3.7, but it is already reflected in yours.
So it's been replaced in ours, but we do have to approve the amendment since it was not in the original when they got sent out. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Moving on to Agenda Item 2, Matters of the Public. Our Good News presented by Mr. Rice.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to ask my Good News recipients to come forward and Mr. Canfield. Again, we have Mr. Canfield with the Oriental Rotary Club here to assist us this evening. Come up here, guys. First, we have from Pamlico County Middle School, Winter Williams. Winter's not here this evening because she had some prior engagements to attend to. But I will speak a little bit about Winter. She is currently in the seventh grade, and Ms. Lanchy had this to say about Winter. "Winter has a kind and gentle spirit. She always does what is asked of her with a positive attitude and a smile. She demonstrates top-notch work ethic in all of her classes, and she is helpful to her teachers. She is what an exemplary student looks like at PCMS. Congratulations, Winter Williams, for being Rotary Student of the Month for Pamlico County Middle School." Next, we have from Pamlico County High School, Leila Rich. Step forward just a little bit, Leila. Step forward a little bit. Leila is currently in the 11th grade, and Ms. Holton had this to say about Leila. "Leila is fairly new to Pamlico, but has quickly become an integral piece of our student body through her volunteer work and membership in SGA. Academically, she also excels both in her college and high school courses. Her work often goes above and beyond the requirements, as she takes advantage of meeting with her teachers to ensure every piece of work is perfect. Congratulations, Leila Rich, Pamlico County High School, February Rotary Student of the Month."
I present you with this, and I hope everybody is aware of our scholarship coming up itself, not a special one. But I'm hoping to give away all the scholarships this year. Last year, we did not give away seven. I learned of scholarships in Pamlico, and I hope people will enter, and should receive it. Not picking on you. So anyway, I would present to this point, I'll present one to each of their, this is the model for the Rotary service itself. We'll find that out. Four-way test. The things we think say are due is the truth. If it bears your well concern, we'll build goodwill and better friendships, and we'll be beneficial.
Next, again, from Pamlico County Middle School, we have Aiden Gomez. Aiden is currently in the eighth grade, and Ms. Lanchy had this to say about Aiden. "Aiden Gomez is new to Pamlico County Middle School, but he very quickly immersed himself in hurricane culture. He is a well-rounded student inside and outside of the classroom. His teachers describe him as an advocate for his own learning. He always brings an interesting perspective to class discussions, often one that is unique to..." Abby is in the 12th grade, and Commander Robinson nominated Abby, and I'm going to read what he shared about Abby, and it's quite long, and I just couldn't cut any of it out. I tried. "Abby Harwick is one of the top three Navy ROGT, excuse me, JROTC candidates whom I've had the pleasure to teach during my 20 years of Navy JROTC instructor. I have known Abby..." "...woman. Abby is top-notch in all that she does. She is currently ranked second in her class and serves as the commanding officer of the Pamlico County..." "...the All Services Joint Leadership Academic Bowl in 2022. She single-handedly built the drone team from scratch and was able to lead the team to participation in the Area Six Championship in her first year. Abby recently completed the inaugural Chief of Naval Aviation's Flight Academy where she earned her private pilot's license. She was the first in her squad to solo and complete all the licensing requirements. She was the only one, she was only one of 20 out of nearly 300 applicants to be accepted into this prestigious program. Also, through her active leadership, the NJROTC unit has been selected as a distinguished unit for the past three years and is on track to repeat again this year. The Pamlico County High School NJROTC unit enjoys the highest reputation within the greater Navy JROTC community. Abby always sets the proper example for her participation in various community service-related activities with the NJROTC unit. Whether helping with the Adopt a Highway, serving tables at the Cancer Survivors Weekend at a local camp, directing traffic at multiple community events, or planning and executing school-wide events, Abby always leads the way. Abby is calm yet enthusiastic about all that she pursues. She and her staff always ensure the Navy JROTC unit is always prepared for each event to include the annual pass review, Navy Ball, or overnight field trips. Abby is a trusted mentor to the junior cadets. Her wisdom is sought by both..." "...and chartering a Skills USA chapter at Pamlico County Middle School, which is actually the first one ever at the middle school. She has many students actively engaged in Skills USA, holding monthly meetings and conducting various service projects. Last week, she had seven students compete in the Regional Skills USA competition in Winterview. All seven students medaled and are eligible to compete in the state competition next month in Greensboro. In addition, Ms. Hale has developed an excellent partnership with FRC East and has had engineers make frequent visits to her classroom to give her students real-world experiences and develop their interest in future career since then. CTE gives students an opportunity to explore and develop their career interests, making learning relevant and meaningful. Classroom principals come to life in each CTE program area as students are able to apply their knowledge in hands-on applications and truly learn by doing. We are proud of each teacher in our CTE program, but especially proud of Ms. Hale and the work she is doing at PCMS. Congratulations, Ms. Sherri Hale."
Great job.
That is the end of the Good News for this evening. Those of you, if you're welcome to stay, if you've got homework to do, feel free to do much reading.
Have a good night.
3.1 Membership Report. As of February 27th, we start with Pamlico Primary with a minus two, holding steady at Fred Anderson. Same for the middle school, high school. Due to early grads, we did have a drop of 33, oh, excuse me, 31, which made our total minus 33 again, early grads. And we don't want to fault the kids for that, of course, which makes our total right now 1166, but right back at our normal number around 1,200 without those. So then next, item 3.2, School Resource Officer Update, and a lot of these items in my superintendent report tonight are just merely updates because I get, typically what I get asked throughout the month, or what I get emails about throughout the month, are the things that I want to mention. I feel that's the things that people are questioning. I feel that's the things that people are questioning. So as you know, we have our resource officer at the high school, which we've had for some time now. We did add one a month or so ago to the middle school, and next week, we'll be adding another one. So there's probably going to be a little switcheroo, and the other person, I think right now, it's up to the Sheriff's Department, but right now, they're looking at that one being at, the new one being at the middle school, and probably having the one that's at the middle school moving to the two lower schools for now until we have a fourth one, and then we'll be set, which I'm so excited and so thankful for the support from everybody to get those in our school. There was a newscast on, I think, Thursday where they did kind of a little update about, you know, the importance of having resource officers in the school. So we're just really excited, and I've heard really good things about the new one that we have at the middle school. So. Item 3.3, New School Update. Again, not a whole lot to update since our last meeting, except that we did have a great big roundtable discussion with a lot of the folks that have been able to go on the visits and to have the meetings with the architects. In the back of the room, you'll see some sketches. That is where it stands right now. Each school, middle school and high school, has copies of these plans that they're now working up some of the inside details. One of the things the architect told us that is that it's just important right now that all of these, all the things that we need are inside the school. We can move them around, we can make one thing bigger if we can make something else smaller, we really can't add a whole lot of square footage because this is what we can afford. He's going to start scheduling small group meetings, maybe with high school science teachers, with the athletics departments at the middle school and high school to make sure that the facilities look like what we think they need to look like. Also, one big thing that's happening soon is that we're going to work on a mock schedule. This is a big ask, but this is what the architect asked us to do. And any of you that were at the meeting, I had three board members there, we all just kind of gasped. He said, if you could take your current schedule, middle school and high school, and see if that works in this building. We know we're working on next year's schedule right now, and that takes a lot of effort. Those of you that have had anything to do with scheduling know that. So we decided to schedule a day, we brought some players to the table, and we're not leaving the room until we have a mock schedule, which, you know, we're probably three years out right now from that schedule, but can we make it work? And a part of that is, right now, we have some facilities that we have at both schools. It may be that we could have one facility, and through scheduling, we can share it. So anyway, we still have a long, long ways to go, a lot more questions to answer, a lot more things to do, but we're on the way. So please feel free to take a look at that before you, before you leave. Any questions from any board members that were not there, or even the ones that were there, any comments? All right, work in progress. So next, very excited, we had our first parent advisory, advisory council meeting last week, and Dr. Johnson and Ms. Dixon and I had, was it six parents, five or six parents were there? All schools were represented, and we had an agenda, we went through it, we gave them an opportunity just to have roundtable discussion about anything they wanted to talk about, any hot topics. The hot topic for us really, probably that we spent the most time on, was not only talking about what are, what are our goals for this group, what is our mission, vision for this group, but the, the school calendar. So we spent a lot of time talking about that and how it would impact them, and so had some really good conversation. They didn't say a whole lot right now. We have no doubt that they will always be that way, but they said, you know, we just wanted to listen today, and next meeting, we'll bring back some more information. So it was really, it was a great meeting. Anything, Dr. Johnson or Ms. Dixon, that you would like to add to that?
I mean, it was, it was a great meeting. It was exactly what we were sort of envisioning, each school having some representation there. Candid conversations, and I thought it was great, so I'm glad for that opportunity.
Different perspectives on the subject, so depending on age groups and such. I guess they didn't want to call.
So would this take place like once a month? How, how often would they meet?
We're going to meet again in May and then again in August, so we'll look at it hopefully during mid-quarter.
And we are going to alternate the time of the meetings because everybody can't do it during the day, and everybody can't do it at night. Sometimes because of children, you want to meet during the day, and sometimes because of children, you want to work at night, so, or do it at night. So we're alternating, so hopefully everybody will have the opportunity. So some people came on their lunch break, so it was, it was, it was good. And everyone that, I think everyone that applied was able to get in, some had to end up declining because of new jobs or whatever, but everyone that applied was able to get in, so. Anybody else? So very excited about this next item, 3.5, Traffic Study Update. Sounds boring, right? Well, traffic study at the primary school, if you remember, a little over a year ago, we had someone come to our meeting and complain about the traffic, which we all know that about, just don't plan to go anywhere down Niels Creek Road between about 2:15 and probably 3 o'clock. So the Department of Transportation has been working with Ms. Carter Moore, Corey Harrison, our maintenance director, I think Henry's been involved, Steve Curtis, myself, who else am I missing? Is that everybody? And we've gone through several drafts of what something new would look like or could look like, taking our existing property and getting those cars off the road. And it's just like with some other things we're going to talk about tonight, once you fix one thing, it messes up something else. And so we've kind of gone back and forth, back and forth, and also keeping, you know, cost at a minimum because, you know, we're not going to have to pay for this. So, you know, they were very, wanted to be very careful about all of that. So happy to say, as of this morning, we got a copy of our final plan, which we all have approved, and I'm going to email that to you tonight so you can see it. But what will happen is, basically, when you turn into that first row at the primary school, it will go much farther down where the kind of the gazebo area is, and that will go away. Then it'll circle around, so all the waiting will be on the, on that road instead of outside. And then there's a whole extra lane for where only five cars can be loading at the same time. They've got a whole, it's like a five or six-page document, they do, this is what they do. They try to make transportation better for the citizens, and they've come up with a pretty good plan. Steve, anything you would like to add?
Looking forward to it.
Well, I'll send that to you guys. Like I said, we just got it, everything was already done for the board meeting, we got that this morning. So I'm excited to send that to you, Ms. Carter Moore. I know you're probably excited. It's been a long time coming because we just have kind of always said, there's just nothing we can do. But anyway, the state got involved, and now we're going to do something about it. And they'll probably start this summer, is that what they said, Mr. Curtis? They'll start this summer and hopefully have it ready for the fall. So that'll be good, that's good news. All right, next, Heartworks Transportation Update, and I think you were going to start with that.
Yeah. So if you remember our meeting last month, we had a discussion on the Heartworks Transportation Update. So there, and we asked Ms. Jackson to have some conversation and report back this month. So reason I'm speaking first, this has been a very hot topic among the board this month, also with Ms. Jackson, also with her staff. And one thing I want to make sure our board understands is that, which I'll say, I think this is my 15th year on the board, and one thing that this has taught me, being on the board, is always make sure I know both sides of the story before I make a decision. So what I'm going to start with, Ms. Jackson, and, and I'm going to say her staff, we've got all, a lot of them sitting here, in no way, shape, or form, they are not out against Heartworks, and they don't want to not transport students from their schools to Heartworks. But they are very stingy with their, their instructional time. And, and I want them to be stingy with their instructional time because we need, we need to have our students with their teachers the amount of time that we need them there. So the issue is bus drivers, really, that's, that's the main issue, is bus drivers. We've, we've got buses that we could use to transport these students to Heartworks when all the other children are released, but we're having a lot of issues with bus drivers. So what would happen is if we had to release those students early to get on a bus that would then take them to Heartworks and then come back, then the rest of the schools would release those students, and, and Ms. Jackson's going to give a report, and these, all these individuals are here tonight to answer questions or speak. Thing is safe to say, at a minimum, 15 minutes, maybe up to 30 minutes of instructional time that, that these students could lose with their teachers. So I've asked Ms. Jackson, and we've had a lot of conversations, we're thinking outside of the box, how can we, how can we make this work? How, what can we do? It's going to end up, you know, costing time and money, but that's, that's what we have to do. But we need to bear in mind that right now, what the, I think what's causing the biggest issue is instructional time, and, and we're stingy with it, and we need to be stingy with it. We need, we definitely need these students to go to Heartworks, they're providing a very good service, very good program, but we also need to make sure that our students are getting their instructional time that they need every day. So with that, Ms. Jackson's going to give us an update. She's got her staff here that can answer questions and can fill in everything from instructional time at, at each school, to curriculum, to transportation issues, and, and everything that's revolving around the circle, trying to make this happen so that we can continue to be a good partner with Heartworks. And Ms. Jackson, I, I think, hopefully I explain kind of both sides of the story a little bit of what's going on right now, trying to make this work, so.
Well, I'll just say that, well, and you hit the nail on the head, we all feel like that this after-school program, really any after-school program, is very, very important. Our issue right now is just the actual transporting of the kids, and it's not as cut and dry, with all due respect, as just they're a block away. We can just, because every, there were five of us that have sat around a table and around a table and around a table and tried to come up with something that we could do besides sacrificing instructional time, which I had a principal say before, I will sacrifice instructional time, I will get my license, and I will drive these kids. We cannot cut instructional time. Because every time, we would come up with an answer that we thought would work, and we'd say, I got it, I got it. There was a domino effect. Now that means there are four schools, because most of our buses now have kids from all four schools, which, I'll be honest, I didn't realize that until recently, it used to be very different. So if one bus is waiting, then there's, there's somebody from every school, that staff now has to stay with those kids until that bus gets there. So there's a lot of things. But what you guys asked me to do last month was to talk to Heartworks, Jamie, I think you mentioned it, and to see if anything had changed since I met with them at the beginning of the year, maybe something has changed in that they could do some things that they couldn't do this year. One of the things that we offered them last year, and, and again, was that if they could just provide a driver, I think they have three staff members and a director, if I'm not mistaken, you know, we provided the bus at one point, we provided a bus, we did provide the gas, the maintenance on the bus, all of that, and they just drove there, picked up the bus, made their circle around the block, like y'all said, and then they stayed there. And then our buses went on like normal. We did do that. They also transported, because we have other daycares, other after-school programs beside just Heartworks, and they actually had, we had a backup driver at another daycare. So if one couldn't do it, the other one would do it, that actually helped. Then, I don't really, I guess COVID hit, they didn't have a driver anymore, and so they said, we're just going to use our, we don't have a driver for the bus. We made the same offer at the beginning of the year. They just used their van and their bus until they got everybody there, which is what they've been doing. But what we've offered them is the same thing again, and that cost them no money. We told, we have a class April 3rd and 4th, I think. Okay, the end of April. I told them they could, they could come for free, we would take care of all the costs for that, if they can just get someone that will get licensed, we'll provide the bus, the gas, everything, it just, it will cost them nothing. Because that's a part of what they're saying, is due to not having the 21st Century Grant, they won't be able to afford this anymore. So that's why we were hoping that was going to work, but they, they just have no one or don't want anyone to have to get licensed. So it leaves us in the same boat that we're in right now, and they don't want, I guess, do the vans and the buses anymore, and I'm not sure why, unless it's because of the cost of fuel, I'm not sure, they haven't really said. So that's where we are. But other than time or money, if we hire someone outside, that's not one of our regular drivers, that we would pay, I mean, I said to Mr. Prescott today, well, maybe Heartworks, you know, could, no, no, we don't want, it's going to be time or money, one way or the other, it's going to be time or money. And if you're telling me I have to do that, we're just going to have to figure that out. And I'm hoping people are listening, and I will find somebody that will drive one of our activity buses around that little block, probably twice, to get all the kids, y'all have the numbers, the principals will tell us how many, we'll let the principals tell me how many per school.
I meant to say something earlier. If we have a board member that's interested in getting their bus license.
That would be great.
And doing this.
Because I do not want my principal to get her license.
If I had time, I would do it, but I, my job's not going to permit me to do that, but it, it's, that's, we need a bus driver.
Ms. Alexander?
We have 20, 27, 59. Did you hear?
27, 59.
It's a couple of trips, so we would have to, to take, so.
Becky has?
Right, but that's, I think from what I'm hearing from them is they could still handle the middle school. So, yeah, that they could handle that. So, I mean, I guess unless we figure out how to work that out, too. So anyway, I'll just say this, and I'm going out on a limb because that's what I've been kind of directed, we're going to figure this out. Like I said, it's going to, we're going to give up time, or we're going to pay money, and we're going to pay somebody to do this, you know, and somebody in the community, I got a list today of all the people that have their bus license that don't drive a yellow school bus. I've got employees having to get up at 4 o'clock in the morning now and drive buses that normally don't because we're so short. So anyway, I promise you, it's not because we don't want to, it's never been because we don't want to, I mean, they're our students, I get that 100%, I get that. So we're going to make it work. We're going to have to figure out a way to make it work, and besides you getting your license, we're not losing time. We're not, we're going, we can't lose time. I mean, you want to, can Ms. Alexander get the microphone back? Talk about why we can't lose time, please.
We don't have enough time as it is. I mean, every single minute of our school day is strategically designed to the minute. We make the most of every second that we have. We are in a low-performing status, we cannot, we cannot lose time. 15 minutes does not sound like much, and I'm over here with a pit in my stomach because 30 minutes was mentioned, and I've done all these calculations in my mind. 15 minutes, that's almost, almost two weeks of instructional time for our kids through the end of the year, counting core instruction. That, we take kids and parents to court every year for missing 10 days of instructional time. I mean, it's huge, it's huge. And even though it's just 27 of my students, which I don't have many students, even though it's just 27, when they leave, instruction stops, it's over. You know, you, you can't go ahead because those students, the next day, are going to be behind when they come back. That whole transition, a dismissal, it's just, it would be devastating to our instruction at Anderson. I, I don't, I just can't imagine losing 15 minutes every day. It would be a big hit for our school. And like Mr. Prescott said, this is not because I do not appreciate and think Heartworks is amazing, because it is, and it's a great place for our kids to go, and I hope we can figure something out without losing instructional time. It's just, we, we just can't lose time. I advocated last year to get 10 more minutes added to our schedule, and we had to do a lot of rearranging within the district, and we figured that out, and.
And that was after getting 15 minutes back, when we stopped transporting the Heartwork students.
Ms. Carter Moore, will you speak on time?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, yep.
I concur what she says, but at the primary school, our babies are the youngest, we are the foundation. Every second counts when they're learning how to read, how to identify numbers, how to identify letters, and losing five minutes is devastating, but 15 is unimaginable. Some of our intervention blocks are 30 minutes long, so that's half of an intervention. And let me explain intervention, this one is small group instruction, where we isolate what the students need, and taking that away is devastating to a young learner. Heartworks is important, I understand that, but we can't sacrifice student learning for, you know, transportation issues, so I hope that we can get that settled.
And I may or may not should say this, but when we talked about, you know, they looked at the individual students, the students that we're talking about, some of the students that do go to these after-school programs, they need that extra intervention.
Half of mine.
We know that. I was going to say, it's about half of those students that truly need, so we know that is important, it's just us trying to figure out, we've actually checked with all the districts around us, it's, I mean, and that's why we changed, I don't remember how many years ago, when the transportation director came to us and asked about not delivering students to businesses, because no district around us did that. If they, if they do, someone from that Boys and Girls Club or whatever it is comes and sits with the students until their transportation can get there, it's not on the other staff, because there's a lot, the Teacher's Day doesn't end when the kids leave, y'all know that, those of you that have been in schools, it, it, it goes hard. So we know those students need that intervention, and that's why I said, we'll make it happen, and I can promise you, we're not going to lose time, we can't. Unless I, it's out of my hands, we're not going to lose time, it may cost us money because we may have to pay someone to do it. I've got an idea, it came to me just later this afternoon, some people might not like it, but we got to do what's best for kids, so. I'm going to see, I, I will pledge to do what I can to make it work. So I'll just say that we have, they want to know about April 1st, if we're going to be able to provide transportation or not, that's why we brought it up before. So I have a plan before April 1st. So I'll have a plan before April 1st, and I'll email the board if that's okay.
All right. You got it first. Yes, because I want to make sure everyone knows as well, we, we value the time as well. I mean, it's not like we want it to do away with the time. And I guess my, one of the questions that I do have is, is there a certain time where we have to get them, I mean, to Heartworks by a certain time?
Now, the issue is how the students are released and how they leave, and you would have to, so if, if we didn't, if we released them, then the 15 minutes, and that's, that was, I'm glad you figured that out. 15 minutes is two weeks. Two weeks is 10 days, and we're taking parents to court over students missing 10 days. That's, I'm a numbers person, y'all know that. And that, that's, yeah, that's, that's, that hits the nail on the head right there. The issue, Jamie, is when they release those students early, it really doesn't matter if they get there at whatever time, it's the dismissal process at the schools that is disrupting and having, so if they, you've explained this to me, we would have to, depending on certain ways, we'd either have to dismiss them early, or we would have to have people stay in there and stay in with them, because you're just going to have kids going here, there, and everywhere. I mean, that's.
Do you not have another after-school program going on? I do apologize, Mr. Johnson.
No, that's fine.
Where you have to have a student out there already waiting with the daycare, two daycares?
They pick them up with the, at the dismissal.
So what time are they out there?
Dismissal, everybody's dismissed at the same time.
At the same time.
Yeah, they're dismissed at the same.
So they're not missing.
Right, and that's what we're trying to do with Heartworks. That's what we do now with Heartworks.
So they're getting, so they're getting on when the other students are getting on buses, they're getting on those.
At the same time.
Okay, at the same time. So, and that's what we're trying to do with Heartworks. Ms. McGough.
And that is the way it is now.
Well, Mr. Prescott is a numbers person, and I'm just a country boy, and so I'm a little bit slow sometimes to understand things. This program has been going on for over 20 years, and we have not reduced anyone's, excuse me, anyone's instructional time during that time.
Yeah, it was. It was. That's why we changed it. We were, we were losing 15 to 20 minutes every day. That's why we changed it. How many years ago was that? Three, four years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were losing instructional time. That's why we changed it.
And the program is extremely important for over 100 students in Pamlico County who benefit from after-school tutoring, benefit from social activity in a controlled, safe environment while their parents, who are working, are not able to pick them up and take, be with them after school.
100%.
So there are a lot of children who are latchkey kids, but these are not latchkey kids. They are in a safe environment where they are given supportive instruction, social instruction, instruction that helps, I believe, in reducing our dropout rate in future years. Those students are taught the value of education, not that they're not taught that during school, but there are also, this is reinforced in the after-school program. We know that Pamlico County is a low-well county, and that many of these, these kids would be placed in situations where there were drugs or other things that would take away from their school learning experience. So I really feel I would like to see this program work. It's been working for years, and I do not want to take away instructional time. In fact, I would prefer a system more like the Japanese system. They go to school 220 days a year, and 98% of the kids who graduate from Japanese schools can do calculus. So we're, we're no place close to that, but the important thing is that after-school programs like Heartworks can benefit our children and reduce our dropout rate, which will help keep our ADM money higher. And if we are not able to transport those children a half a mile to Heartworks at the same time that other schools like the Charter School in Arapahoe are doing it, we could possibly lose students to Arapahoe because their parents would say, "I can't take, take off time to pick up my kids in the afternoon when they could be at Heartworks being tutored." And the Charter School will do that. I don't think we want to lose children to any other school system. So I really strongly support making this happen, make it work. It's been working for years. Let's don't change too many things.
What's changing is they're not transporting the children now. That's what's changing. So I don't disagree with anything you said. I don't think anybody in this room does. We, I agree with everything you said about after-school. I could have preached that sermon for you 100%. The problem is, we've all, we just need them to be able to get in the bus and drive it here. It is a very short distance, I mean.
And that's not a change on our part.
Right, we haven't, that's right. We haven't changed anything. They're the ones saying now they're not going to transport anymore. They want us to do it. And so we're saying, "We'll provide the bus, the gas, the maintenance. If you'll just get a person license, we'll pay for that, too." And we've got till August to figure, to work it all out. That's just what we offered, and I thought that was generous. I did, I still think that's very generous. I don't know any other district that's doing that, I'm going to be honest. But it's a benefit for us because it's a benefit for our students, just like you said. But I'll go back to what I said before you said all that. I'm going to make it work. It will cost us time or money, but I am going to make it work. And some of you in here might be doing that, not the principal, but I'm going to make it work. And I said that before all that. I'm going to make it work. It's that important. It's that important to us. I mean, I wish someone there would get their license. It would help tremendously if they would get their bus license. There would be no cost to Heartworks. But if they're not going to do that, then we will do what we have to do.
Could we, could we currently, if we were not, if we, if they lost our transportation, can we currently take an uptick of 90 to 95 kids in our current bus route right now? Or would we have to add a bus and a driver?
We, we don't even have the people to drive. I had to drive on Monday. I mean, we don't have an extra person because we're out there to drive around. My biggest bus could hold 66 kids. That's pretty.
He's saying if they got one.
That's my point, is if, if they.
Well, they would be spread out over all of us, so yes.
If they're unable to transport, and we're saying we will not transport, we still have 100 kids or 95 kids that we must transport somewhere.
Oh, yeah. They would be spread out. It wouldn't be 100 something kids on one bus.
I cannot see that it's not feasible. I'm not saying, I've not looked at your routes, and I know this is difficult. I know it's difficult, but three or four minutes to pick up, three or four minutes to drop off, and get right back in the back line, that's not going to be 30 minutes of instruction.
But that's not how it works. That's not how it works. If, I mean, they all leave at the same time. So somebody's, somebody's kids are going to be waiting. Believe me, we've done this now for, because Mr. McCaw was right, we have done this for a long, long time. But it was, and it was at the principal's request, administer, "Please, you know, can we get some of this instructional time back and do something different?" And that's why it was changed ever how many years ago. And then I'll just say this, you know, what I'm, what I'm going to work out, because I will work it out, we're going to hear from some other daycares, too, who had to go buy buses, and other after-school programs who have now bought vans because we wouldn't provide transportation.
How, how many of those are nonprofit?
I don't know. A couple.
I think it's the consensus and, hey, you know, we're with you, guys, all the way, but when it comes to the children, that's the reason why we are all here. So I think it's the consensus of most of this board is that, and I thank you for saying that it's going to happen, because that's what we want to do. We want to see it happen. I know that it may be hard for you, I'm sure it is, but guess what? I know you can do it.
And we are looking forward to anyone out there up here that wants to sign up for that bus class, because put your money where your mouth is. Let's get these bus licenses. We can take turns.
So the solution to the fix is, most likely, is going to end up, we're going to have to pay somebody to drive one of our activity buses to go to the primary school in Anderson, in the, you know, to drop them off and then come back. So unless we just miraculously get a whole lot of people sign up to be bus drivers for this April class, but, but I feel like it's the consensus of the board. You know, not everybody has spoken, and some others want to speak, but it, I think the bottom line, it's, we're going to end up having to pay somebody to drive a bus. So I'm going, I'm going to look to the board because they want to know by April 1st, and this will kind of help give Ms. Jackson some more direction, is everybody, the consensus of the board, is everyone's okay that, that we will have to pay somebody to drive an activity bus?
And we got to find that person, but.
And we got to find that person. And that's, so that's going to be the directive after this meeting. Everybody over there? Ms. McGough?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I probably won't let them know by April 1st, because I'll still be working on it, but just know, it'll be in. I'll let them know we're working on it.
Very.
But if, if, at any point, someone from Heartworks wants to get their license, that would be great, too. And then we could be a backup, maybe, because you can't just have one person, because if that person's sick, or if that person's pulled for something else, then we're in trouble, and then we can't get kids there because we don't have. So we need more than one person if we're going to do it this way.
Right.
And it, it is a very difficult task, and I know a lot of you think it's simple. It is not simple, or we would be doing it, I promise you. Why wouldn't we? So I'll just leave it at that. And can I move on now?
Yes.
All right, so with that, item 3.7, Mr. Rice, I think you're going to introduce.
Prior to COVID, we had an alternative school, which we called Pace, and when we went home for COVID, there was really no longer a need for an alternative school. When COVID was over, the principals worked hard to try to keep these students in their schools, but they found out that it really wasn't a good idea. So last year, we hired a director and a facilitator slash success coordinator, and they've done an outstanding job revamping our alternative school. One thing, we had a building that was very much in disarray, was falling apart, and prior to that year, last year, they, Corey and his team redid the building and made it a pleasant place to be, which I think that's really helped a lot of it as well. But tonight, we have the director and facilitator here with us to share a little about their program, Sanji Bell and Brian Beck.
Good evening. My name is Sanji Bell, and I'm the director of Pamlico County Schools Alternative Learning Center.
Sanji, right into the mic, or they can't hear you at home.
Reopened in January 2022 as Keynes Academy, formerly referred to as Pace. With me, I have Mr. Brian Beck, the Alternative Learning Center facilitator. Ms. Jackson asked us to speak to you very briefly about Keynes Academy.
I did say very briefly.
Mr. Beck and I strive daily to provide adverse students with a safe and caring and learning environment that promotes positive self-esteem, academic success, and prepare our students to actively return to their home schools. We have established clear and concise classroom expectations to ensure all students can be successful. Individual intervention plans are developed before students enter the program to address their individual needs, their challenges, and any external factors impeding their academic success. We encourage students to focus on their strengths and improve their weaknesses.
We provide a small classroom setting that holds up to 10 students from Pamlico County Middle School and Pamlico County High School. Breakfast, lunch meals are provided by the Pamlico County High School cafeteria. Students' daily schedules are created to include live sessions with their teachers and Google Classroom instructions to include videos and recorded sessions. Students have opportunities to participate in a group activity each day to improve social skills and positive behavior reinforcement. Students are assigned for a minimum of 30 days, at which time they may return to their home school if exit criteria has been met. Progress reports are sent home daily to highlight students' success and/or areas in which need improvement. Students have individual counseling sessions weekly with the school counselors or from an outside agency weekly. The behavior specialist meets with the students three times a week, focusing on social, emotional needs as well as social skills. We focus daily on monitoring, mentoring, modeling appropriate behaviors in a classroom environment, enable students to make successful choices. Ms. Bell and I model the four Ps of respect daily that we require the students to do, which are be polite, be positive, be prepared, and be productive.
We communicate daily with the teachers of our students and weekly with their home school administrators as well as the counselors.
Upon students returning to their home schools, we continue to monitor their progress and follow up as needed. I will go over to their schools and have one-on-one conversations with them. So far, we have not had any students to return who have successfully completed our program.
This concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions?
Oh, I have a question, but I have a comment. I, Mr. Beck and Ms. Bell, I do appreciate the efforts that you do over there at the school. Personally, having worked over there many years ago, I kind of know what type of environment it is, and so I, I would just like to say thank you.
Thank you.
How many students do you currently have?
We have six currently at the moment.
And how many of those are from each school?
Five are from the middle school and one are from the high school.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Trebber, that is all I have.
All right. Yep. All right, moving on to agenda item number four, consent agenda. Everybody's had a chance to review.
Excuse me, miscellaneous. Yeah.
I didn't have anything.
Well, do we make comments in the miscellaneous?
Oh, that's usually in case I forgot something, but he said he had something.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. So, and just to mention, I just want to say how much I enjoyed being invited to the middle school, being interviewed during the Black History Month. Also had the opportunity to participate in a door decorating contest, which the doors was very impressive, and that was at Fred Anderson. And, but the highlight of my week was going to the school and reading to Ms. Custer's class. Kind of made it interactive for them to participate in the reading of Reddies and Ham, so I just want to say how much I enjoy that.
All right. Any other comments?
I, I also went to Fred Anderson and was able to read to a fifth grade class, and it was great. It was good. Enjoyed that a lot, yes. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I was there for the door, but I also want to congratulate and say thank you to the Staff of the Month of January and the Staff of the Month for February. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. We need to, we'll put that on our agenda, because you.
Board member time.
Yeah, board member time. I just, it slipped my mind. Yeah, but we'll, it's always a good time to have that. And thank you to the principals and, and those of you at the different schools that send us the emails and ask us to do those things. That's great. Thank you. Keep doing it. Now, consent agenda, everyone's had a chance to review the, we had three field trips to ratify and one field trip to approve. If we need to remove any of those individually and vote on those individually, we can. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Motion carries. All right, moving on to agenda item five, our Read to Achieve Summer Reading Camp 2023.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's agenda item is for informational purposes and is to provide you and is to provide you just some information on our summer reading camp in accordance with our Read to Achieve legislation. In accordance with General Statute 115(c) 83.11, and in an effort to provide continued support for students not demonstrating reading proficiency as determined by state diagnostic assessments, Pamlico County Schools will offer Summer Reading Camp July 10th through 13th for eligible second and third grade students. Summer Reading Camp hours will be Monday through Thursday from 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at Pamlico Primary School. Transportation, as well as breakfast and lunch, will be provided for participating students. Parents will be informed of their student's possible qualification for reading camp in mid-March with a final confirmation of selection in early May. Once student enrollment for priority second and third graders has been established, the Department of Curriculum Instruction will work with our cabinet to determine additional funding sources for the possibility of providing the inclusion for priority first graders. Unfortunately, this year, the state will not be funding eligible first grade students for reading camp. Interest forms have gone out to potential summer camp staff, and we hope to make staffing decision selections prior to spring break. More information on student enrollment numbers, staffing, and other potential summer opportunities for our students will be provided to you at our April board meeting.
Did you say July 10th through the 13th?
I'm sorry. It should be the 10th through the 31st.
Through the 31st.
It'll be two, I'm sorry, 10th through the 13th. 10th through the 31st. So we have to provide 72 hours of instruction. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Again, this is for information.
Thank you.
All right. And now 5.2 will be our 2022-23 Summer Testing Program Plan. And Ms. Davis.
Good evening. I'd like to submit for approval the 2022-23 School Year retesting plan. You all received a corrected version after I received clarification from DPI today at about 1:00 p.m. of the dates for the testing plan. For the 2022-2023 school year, districts may administer the end-of-grade and end-of-course test during summer programs. The readministration scores will not be included in growth analysis for school accountability or for educator effectiveness. However, the higher score will be included in the proficiency calculations for school accountability within the current accountability year. Pamlico County Schools will provide a summer testing plan that will remediate students who did not make a proficient score in math for grades 3 through 8 in Math 1, Math 3, English 2, and Biology during the 2022-23 school year.
Everyone's got the handout. Any questions on this for Ms. Davis?
Yes.
So there's just one day?
Remediation and readministration cannot occur until after school is over. And because the testing program does not provide funding to pay teachers to provide remediation, we try to get the remediation and testing done within the workdays.
So Ms. Dixon said the summer camp that she was referring to would be for second and third grade, right? So will there be a summer camp for fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth?
That's what I was mentioning at the last part of my formation session. We're going to be talking about possibly providing our summer bridge again this year where students transition to middle school and then high school, and then hopefully looking at some CTE opportunities along with Dr. Johnson. So that's on our cabinet agenda for in the morning.
Oh, okay.
But the students would not be able to test during that time because the accountability year ends July 6.
I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If there are none, we do need a motion to approve the plan as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Curtis, ready to roll?
Good evening. Item 6.1 is requesting approval of two budget amendments. And I think you have those handouts, 6.1. The first one is for the State Public School Fund, and up at the top, you see the revenues there. They're only split up two ways, the State Public School Fund, and then textbook money is always budgeted separately. And so what we're doing is when we originally approved the uniform budget, and we did that back at the October 3rd meeting last year, there have been revisions, allotment revisions that we have received from DPI. And so it's time to go ahead and do an amendment. And there'll be more between now and the end of June that I'll be presenting to you. The first one, at the very top, you see the revenues. We're showing an increase in the State Public School Fund of $1,923,973.24 and a decrease in textbooks of $35,839.98. And the reason for the decrease is the textbook warehouse is not used very much anymore. There are very few state textbooks that are located at the textbook warehouse that we purchase. We pretty much deal directly with the vendors now and buy from them. So we're able to move that textbook money to another program in order to pay for those instructional textbooks. Then right below that, you see the expenditures, and that's based on the purpose function code. That's at the very left. It starts at 5,100, goes all the way to 8,400. And you see the brief description of what they're for, and then the increases and decreases. Obviously, you've got the biggest increase in regular instructional programs, which is almost one and a half million dollars. And again, when the uniform budget was done and approved back in October, that's nothing more than an estimate to get us going. When we receive our planning allotments and initial allotments, a lot of the programs are not included in that, and we get those at a later date. So that's why we're, you know, we're having to make these changes, which is a good thing because it's additional funding over and above what we had at the very beginning of the year. Anyway, the total of those increases and decreases in expenditures is $1,888,133.26, which is the same increase of the revenues. The uniform budget showed an original budget down right below that of $11,333,083, and we're increasing it by the $1,888,133.26. So the total amended State Public School Fund budget is $13,221,216.26. That's quick. Any questions with regards to that? Okay, if not, we'll go to budget amendment number two. I think you also have that one. This is to the Federal Grant Fund. This is a two-page document. And with the Federal Grant Fund, you'll see the revenues. There's many more different revenue programs unlike the State Public School Fund. The Federal Grant Fund revenues have to be budgeted by Program Report Code, by PRC. Get those, get those done. So anyway, let me find the thing here, the right sheet. So basically, the whole first pages are the revenue pages for the Federal Grant Fund. And you can see the different descriptions, Career and Technical Education, McKenty-Vento, IDA, preschool, and the list goes down and down. All of these adjustments and amendments is an increase. And it's either because when we got the final allotment, it was more than what we originally anticipated, or we didn't even have that allotment at all. There's typically a pretty lengthy delay in getting the federal programs funded. So these are all revenues, and you see all the increases there. There's one real big one down there towards the bottom, is part of the ESER III money, and that's that PRC 181, the Program Report Code. That's the three-year ESER III grant that we're paying pretty much all salaries and benefits to learning acceleration coordinators, instructional tutors, exceptional children, teachers. I think there's about 22 or so employees that are currently funded from this program. We're in the second year, so we've got one more year. Hopefully, we'll be able to take some of those employees, and through attrition, we'll be able to move them out of that ESER fund and be able to keep them. But when they originally went into the ESER program, they were told basically it was going to be a three-year funding string of money. So that amount of money is what carried over from last year, $2,174,782.68. So the increase on the revenues for the Federal Grant Program is $2,920,270.23. And then on the page two of that, you see the expenditures. Again, just like the state, it's broken down by the purpose code, 5,100s, 5,200s. And again, that net increase is the same as the increase in the revenues, $2,920,270.23. When we did the uniform budget back in October, the Federal Grant Fund budget was a little over a million dollars, And we're adding a little over 2.9 million to that for a total of $3,986,650. So we're basically almost quadrupling the federal budget. And that doesn't mean we've got money to burn. We were spending this money anyway before it even came. So we knew it was coming. We had it budgeted. We had employees paid from these different funds. Okay? Any questions on that? If not, Mr. Prescott, I just need a motion to approve that, those two budget amendments.
Any questions? If there are none, I'd need a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
I have a motion. And second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is lottery funds from the state of North Carolina. We don't talk about this very, very often, but we're going to tonight. The handout that you have are board minutes from the Pamlico County Board of Education from January 2nd, 2007. And you have those minutes there with you, and on page two, there's an outlined paragraph. And then on the very next page, it's blown up because it's very small print. So if you look at the enlarged page, I'll basically go through it right quick. It says that Mr. Sherrill, Rick Sherrill, who was the superintendent at that time, he reported that he and myself attended the December 8th County Commissioners Meeting to present the plans and cost estimates for the new cafeteria project at Pamlico County High School in the addition to the central office. The Commissioners asked for a commitment from the schools to use lottery funds for debt repayment of these construction projects. Mr. McCallum made a motion, seconded by Paula Hardison, to allow Pamlico County Commissioners to utilize our lottery revenue proceeds for debt repayment on the new cafeteria project at the high school and under the condition that the Pamlico County Board of Education will be adequately funded on an annual basis in capital outlay funds. Obviously, we didn't want to give them that money or agree to that, and then they not adequately fund us in our capital outlay projects. So basically, the state was providing lottery funds to each school district in the state. And our Board of Education agreed to allow the county to utilize that money for debt repayment on the loan. The loan that the county got back in 2007, 2008 for the high school addition of cafeteria and the addition to the central office back here was about four and a half million dollars. And so ever since then, they've been making semi-annual payments on that debt. And in October of last year, they paid it off. Okay? So our lottery funds contributed about $1.7 million to the county to go towards paying that debt. I mean, a pretty substantial amount of money that, you know, normally would be coming to us, but obviously, we wanted them to have that money to help. It didn't pay everything, the entire payment. The rest of it was just paid with local sales tax from the county. Anyway, I'm saying that to say this. They, the debt is paid in full. They no longer can use that money, and so it comes back to us until they borrow some money again in a couple of years for the brand-new 612 school. In the meantime, those lottery funds should come to us. And the way that it works is, I mean, they don't just send us the money. There's, we've got an allotted amount of money up in Raleigh at DPI. And when an application, we have to make an application to have these funds sent to us. And it has to be, it's a joint application with Pamlico County and the Pamlico County Board of Education. Both chairmen have to sign that application, and then the money actually goes to the county. They're the fiscal agency that holds that money. And that's the way it's been happening for the past 14 years, is they've been getting the money and using it. Now, we're allowed to use that money, so it still has to be a joint application. The money would still go to the county, but then we would either, if we've got a capital project, we would either pay for that upfront and then request reimbursement from the county, or we would merely take our invoices and give them to them, and the county would pay it. So, I mean, to me, this is huge, that we've, at least for several years, hopefully, will have use of this lottery money that we'll be able to utilize for capital projects. And, I mean, I can think of a bunch right now that we need that money to get a lot of things done. And I know we're getting a new 612 school, and I know there's a phase two, but that's, we're talking three years down the road before we're in a new building. So the middle school's got three more hurricane seasons of potentially being flooded. Okay? We don't need additional wear and tear over the next three years on our buildings if we can do something about it right now. I do have a handout I want to, that wasn't in your packet, that I want to hand out.
That'll probably answer some questions.
There's a, DPI has a website where you can go in and actually look at lottery funds by school district and by county. And this is the most recent one that I pulled up back on February 23rd. You see the date up there in the top left-hand corner. And notice it says county Pamlico and then LEA Pamlico County Schools. So this is jointly, again, that application has to be approved by both entities. The ones I want you to look at first is that column identified as lottery funds. You see that? It's the second one from the left. And this is a two-page document, so if you'll look at the second page of that document. And if you look at the column for project allocation, that is all the applications that the county submitted to receive lottery funds to help with the debt reduction on the cafeteria and the central office addition. And if you look down there at that total, there's the $1.7 million that they received from our lottery funds to make payments on that debt. As of right now, or as of February 23rd, there's a little over $111,000 sitting in that account. And that's money that we can utilize. So I'm very excited about that. You just, you never know what's going to happen as far as funding from, you know, capital outlay, or you never know when. outlay, or you never know when heat and air conditioning might blow or something. I mean, we're, we're just spending tons of money right now on fixing heat and air conditioning units, compressors, just all kinds of stuff. And we just need some work done on our schools also. So that's a great thing, that we have that money available. I wanted to show you this too. If you look on the next column to the right where it says Needs-Based Lottery Fund, I don't know if you can see that highlighted number there, but below it to the left in bold, it's a little clearer. This is our first, first two installments of our $50 million. So there's $28,210,147 of that 50 million that has already been allocated. And the third and fourth allocation, I'm told, will probably happen before June 30th. So hopefully, by June 30th, that will show $50 million. And we know the money's there. Unfortunately, we can't put it in our bank account, draw interest on it. But anyway, it's just good to see that chunk of money, over half of the money right there that we'll be utilizing for the 612 school. So it's the second time I'm excited tonight. Got two things to be excited about, it's money. All right. And the one on the right, Repairs and Renovation Lottery Fund. This is a fairly new fund that until this year, most finance officers in the state didn't even know about. And just this year, in the, in the 2022, 23 year, school districts have started drawing some of this money to use it for repairs and renovations. I think so far, about 20 school districts out of 115 have drawn a little bit of money off here. But that is almost $590,000 that a couple of months ago, I didn't know we had. So that is a huge surprise and a great one, that we can utilize, again, same app, same process, application has to be joint signed, money goes to the county, and then will flow to us once we, you know, get projects picked out. And you've got to, you've got to give a description when you submit the application of what you're going to use the money for, which that, obviously, that won't be a problem. We'll be able to do that. So, you know, lottery money, we can use for at least a couple of years. We see part of that 50 million, which is great. And now we've got another lottery fund that we'll be able to utilize. So that's, from a financial standpoint, that's great news and very exciting about that. Any questions?
So that 589, almost 590,000, is just for our school system?
Correct.
Capital, capital projects. And does that have to be shared with the charter school if they had a project? Or are we obligated to share that?
Well, we won't be because the fiscal agent is the county. So we're not physically holding that money, so we would not have, we don't have to share. There is, there is a bill right now out that where charter schools...
They're asking.
They want them to be entitled to a portion of the, all the fund date money that we're, revenues that we're receiving now, which obviously...
So that, this money would not be in there?
This, this money would not be subject to that.
And neither would the, the grant, the 50 million grant money. So that's good that they're in control. That's good, okay.
Yeah, so that's a good thing.
What projects have you got ready for us to start? Using some of, I'm sure there's, I know there's things we, we need to do.
We, we've still got, we've still got a lot of work to do at the middle school that we can use for mitigation. After Florence in 2018, believe it or not, about four months ago, three or four months ago, I got a small chunk of money towards, to go towards mitigation that won't do a whole lot. But we obviously can use some of this money to, to do that. We can't, we can't do a whole lot about hurricanes and flooding, but we can, we can do a lot as far as rain coming in, windstorms and things like that to prevent leaks. I know there's still a bunch of them over there at the middle school that hopefully we can, we can do some work on and fix, fix up.
Should we start identifying some projects to do? Should we wait till after this budget cycle? Or go ahead and start identifying projects and kind of put a plan in place to, to start utilizing some of it?
I don't think it'd be a bad idea to go ahead and to start identifying some projects that we want to, you know, take a look at. You know, I, I, this shouldn't have any impact on our capital funding from the county commissioners, I hope.
I think...
That would be a good idea to do that.
Yeah, with the consensus of the board, maybe start, I don't know, by next meeting or, or the following meeting, following meetings, start having some projects to, that we can discuss and start utilizing some of the money. Any other comments from the board on this? It's there, we might as well use it.
That's exactly right. I mean, it'll sit there, but, and, and just, and grow.
Right.
But if it's there now, if we have a need, we need to utilize it.
And, and the way it's, it seems like, so like the Repair and Renovation Lottery Fund, that's specifically repair and renovation. That's not money that, once we start building the new school, we wouldn't be able to allocate any of that money. And that's what I figured, just wanted to clarify.
Right.
And then the lottery fund, so what's the, what is the difference in the 111,000 and the 589,000?
The, the main difference is that the lottery mon, money can be used for debt reduction.
Okay.
And the repair and renovation money cannot, which won't impact us either way.
Okay.
So the, both of those pots of money will be, will be, will come in very handy for repairs and renovations to our, to our schools.
And the, the reason I asked that question was just to clarify that the lottery fund money, when we get close to getting the final numbers on the new school, and hopefully with assistance from the county, then they could use funds allocated in the lottery fund to help pay any debt, but we would still be receiving repair and renovation funds, correct? Yep, okay. Any other questions?
And this is just for information for y'all. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our agenda item number seven, Governance, 7.1. I think the other highly talked about agenda item for tonight is, is going to be our school calendar.
So Ms. Dixon and I are going to tag team. Matter of fact, if you get ready to talk, go grab that microphone, please. I'll just say this, it's down tonight just to discuss. We can discuss both of the calendars that have been presented to you, and we don't have to vote. I do have the high school principal and the high school guidance counselor here that can talk to you about the surveys and the things that we did. We can just discuss it, or we can, you know, early April is not too late to vote. One of the reasons why we like to have the calendar approved as early as possible in the spring is so that people can make plans for August, because they need to know, are they going to go to school August 5th or August 25th? That's not going to matter in either of these calendars. So the only difference is what happens inside the calendar. So it would not be horrible if you hear what you want to hear tonight and go ahead and vote, or if you want to take some time to talk to some more people. So with that, I guess I will open it up for questions. We have the original calendar that we drafted that looks very similar to this year's calendar, almost identical, except a workday in October instead of March. And that all has to do with professional development. And then we have the one that is behind that, that is the calendar that will have us getting out of school prior to Christmas. I, I'll just say this, officially, the way the rules go is I'm supposed to present one, and then you vote on it. You vote yes or you vote no. And I could absolutely do that. But I'd rather us have conversations about why we have come to where we have come. And, you know, we were gung ho and ready to go with this original calendar until some of you started getting emails from parents. And then that caused me and Ms. Dixon to talk to the high school staff. And I know even since then, even as recently as the last week or so, some of you have been getting comments from parents who are concerned about the getting out before Christmas. I'll just say this, because for most of us, we work the whole year anyway, so it truly does not matter to us. But I'll say this, I even spent some more time, you know, last week in meetings with superintendents and community college presidents. Almost every single community college president was at this meeting. And the consensus is, why wouldn't you do this? And I have a lot of reasons that I can say why we wouldn't do it. I mean, I, I've worked on a traditional calendar for a very long time. But for the K, pre-K eight, it doesn't make a whole, whole lot of difference. But for the high school, it does. It makes a huge difference. And that is why I think so many of our high school, and so many of the high school parents are so in favor of this. And I'm going to be honest, while it looks, and even I said, absolutely not, we cannot have a calendar where there's 20 days difference. While there may be 20 days difference between the two semesters, you have to split those numbers of days from the previous semester. It's really like, you're about 10 less than what you were from this fall. As a matter of fact, I did the math just before I came in here. And when we looked at, we took out that October workday that we had put in for PD, because you want to get as much time in, in as you can before Christmas, which means you're going to go a lot of days. We took out, I think, our early dismissal day. We go, we're going really close to Christmas. When you do that, we're looking at about seven days difference from this fall that we just finished and next fall. And I think some of the people that have been expressing concerns to you are like, you know, it's 21 days or 22 days difference. But when you look at compared to this fall, and I'm good either way, I can see, I can give you a book for both, why it would be good. But I think the advantages outweigh the disadvantages to trying it. And y'all, if we try it and we don't like it, we can always go back to the way it was. That's the way I'm looking at it. And I will be, I'm happy for you to ask questions of me or of this, of the staff. You know, like I said, we did the surveys, we talked about it a lot in our parent advisory council, and, and it was very positive there. You know, of course, with the younger ones, it really doesn't matter. But the ones that were in that meeting that have family members that are teachers at the high school, oh yes, you got to do it. That would be so much better. And I'll tell you, one of the things that I heard, and Ms. Holton and Ms. McCandless, you guys can speak to this, one of the things I heard over and over from people was, they're really not teaching new material after Christmas. They are having to review because they have had two weeks without school. So they're not teaching, they're finishing up the material before Christmas, and now they are reteaching and reviewing. So as far as, you know, that goes, I mean, that makes sense too. So again, I, I was negative against this calendar initially. I mean, I'll admit it. I said, I just don't see how it's going to work. I don't think we can do it. And I've just talked to the people that are doing it, and they just said, you, you have to try it. So that's, that's my two cents worth, happy to answer questions or open up dialogue from the folks that are going to live it every day.
I do have one question. In terms of our parent survey, what is the, what was the response rate in terms of parents?
Give me a minute. I'll have a call.
Um, I think it ended up being a little bit more than that. Can you call this person?
Yes, it ended up being right about 34, 35 families. All of the survey data we did receive back ended up being about 80% or more that were in favor of the change and less than 20% that were against the change. But our parent survey was the one that was the least. We put it out on social media, sent it out to parents that, you know, I'm in regular contact with. But we just didn't have as many participate in that survey. But it was still sitting at about of those surveyed. And some contacted and asked questions as well. Over 80% were in favor.
So what I'm hearing tonight is, it's not going to be 20 days. Because one of the concerns that was expressed with me was, I mean, for example, student in calculus or physics or chemistry, first semester losing 20 days of instruction, that's tremendous. But if it's gone down to seven days, so to clarify...
Well, when we talked about putting the honors classes for our semester and the increased pacing being an expectation of rigor that you have to earn an honors credit in a class...
Right.
We really looked at what could we do as far as putting those tested courses that are honors courses first semester? And being very deliberate with English II honors, Math I honors, we don't really think that's going to be the case, because most of those students who would be eligible for that are currently taking Math I as eighth graders this year. But also, Math III and biology, looking at putting those students in first semester. The terminology I heard over and over from students, some parents and a lot of staff was brain dump. They, they go home over Christmas. The large majority don't do any studying, don't do anything to maintain what they've learned, and they dump over that time. So a lot of the students felt like even though the pacing would be increased if they were in those honors classes, they would retain it better because it'd be fresher on their mind without being distracted by the hustle and bustle of the holiday season. Some of the other classes that are, that are honors level courses may still be in the spring, because we do want to try and keep those who are taking a rigorous course load as balanced as possible. But really focusing on getting the courses that we as a school are held accountable for and our students are held accountable for with state tests, getting those honors level courses in the spring, which would mean inclusion level courses in most of the standard, I'm sorry, in the fall, the standard and inclusion levels in the spring.
So the pacing will increase?
The pacing would increase.
And teachers are okay with that?
They are.
Okay.
I think they feel like it's, it's happening with the, the loss of, just the regression that happens over a break. We forget stuff when we're not using it every day. And, and I think they feel like they can probably do more good in getting them prepared before Christmas than they can in trying to review and in some cases, reteach material that they, they had a month ago but have forgotten over break.
I have another question. And so let's take a senior. Would there be a negative impact on a senior in terms of the testing, in terms of retakes or, or anything of that nature?
Very few of our seniors have any state tests, very, very few. There would be some that might be in a boat where they maybe did not pass Math III the year before, but they've all had English II because they've made it through that. They all, they very rarely have to repeat biology in senior year. There might be a couple of outliers there too, but it's a very small number that would be affected by that. It's a good question, though.
One of the things to think about is, you know, I announced earlier, we had, what, 31 or 32 early grads? And one of the advantages of when we used to be on this kind of a schedule was that those folks could then go on to college. And more, I think, would do that where now, and I know there are some certain courses, sometimes they work out, but most of them, they're just done until graduation.
And we had students that were offered really great internships with Nutrien, through Nutrien and the Volt Center, that almost were not being able to take part because they were not graduating until about three weeks after Nutrien edum. But fortunately, we were able to work it out for them to kind of get an extension and be able to do that. But starting or possibly graduating later in January almost held some of them back from being able to take part. Yes, Ms. Dunbar?
So in your discussions since our last meeting with teachers, especially those of the tested areas, what are their concerns or feelings about it at this point?
I think, you know, I teased about Joanna last time when I was here, but I think a lot of us, it's scary. I mean, it's scary when you look at doing this. We've looked at the calendar a little bit closer. It is fewer days than what we originally thought, and that's been a little bit of an exhale for a lot of us. But also, I think looking at some of those other outliers, like most of those Math I students, I mean, high, high school freshmen, I made this comment before, there is, they don't really understand how school works until about February, when it would be too late. So, but that's not going to be the case for the, most of them, because like we said, most that would qualify to do that, that one state test their freshman year would have already taken in eighth grade through the middle school. So I think, I think, well, really, that, that number was well over 80% that are in favor of this. Some of the, the teachers who said no were because, I don't have enough, I, I can't make a decision on this right now, and I'm just erring on the side of caution. They have sensed if they took the survey again, they would have flipped their answer. And I, I think they feel, they feel like it's scary, but I, they think it's very doable. But everything has to be done with very intentional planning, very intentional and purposeful, like making sure we're using our, our best teachers with the students who need them most, making sure that we're kids that can really truly be successful on that pacing and get any remediation or enrichment that they need, that they'll have that in that first semester.
Didn't one of you tell me that the teachers that had said they were nervous about it were also the ones that thought they were looking at 20 days a month?
Yes, yes.
Where it's really not that now.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's just really not.
And that...
...was given prior to going back and looking at the difference between this fall and what the new fall would be.
And it's just completely lifted, like, I think, the burden for a lot of the teachers who were afraid of it.
And then, one thing I really haven't talked a whole lot about, now let's look at spring semester and all those extra days that we now have. and all those extra days that we now have and putting those courses there where we know we need extra time. And it would be helpful to have, you know, an additional 10 days or whatever in that. I feel like that's something that we really haven't even thought about. And that's gonna be amazing for, I mean, we should do much better, you know, especially tested or academically period.
And when I first came to the county, we boasted several, several, several AP classes. We've brought back more this year. But I really think this is something that would allow our AP numbers and AP enrollment to increase as well. Because students who were in Biology honors may go right into AP Biology in the spring as well and have that, and have better results on these AP courses too. Some of the other courses, like AP Calc is a year-long module basically anyway. But I think it could help us in ways we might not even really be able to anticipate yet.
And one comment that Ms. Jackson made, that if it doesn't work, we can go back to the old way. So it sounds like y'all have done a really good job in putting it together.
So if, hopefully not, but if we did have like a hurricane in the first semester, would we be able to meet and then push back our calendar at that point?
It would automatically happen. We would have to move our days. Because we don't have any, we hardly have any days for makeup days in there. We would have to then carry it over. We would have to. I mean, of course, we'd have a conversation about that. The board would meet, we'd make a final decision. But if we lost four, five, six days, that would be tough then. And that's what, I mean, we all know that. But don't mention that H word.
I know, right? So this calendar has been presented to the high school, like the school improvement team or the school?
That calendar was under lock and key, and we kept it under lock and key. And we just suggested what we are.
Oh, okay.
Did you want to share with the parents that came to Parent Advisory Council, they were allowed to see it, but we collected and packed up? And so they had the opportunity to look at it and look at things like Christmas break and talk that through. So they did leave it as a way.
But the teachers haven't seen it?
The teachers haven't. They've seen it.
This actual calendar, but they know what it would look, because it's basically, you go to school until Christmas. Couple of days off at Thanksgiving.
There's not many workdays.
And some of the teachers too had actually, they came to me and they were like, it's not 20 days. They had counted our current school calendar. There's no way it can be 20 days. So some of them had already just at the thought, gone and counted, and they were like, it's not as bad as you're thinking. You need to make sure everybody knows that.
And it actually is 21 days between the two semesters. But it's not 21 days less than what they're used to teaching, which makes all the difference.
And that's the big thing. So I hope parents out there are listening that it's not 20 days yet.
So if it's adopted, is there any merit putting a disclaimer on the calendar about the hurricane? So, you know, parents is not, you know, shocked about the possibility of the calendar changing back to the original format?
Well, I just, we usually put on here makeup days, I don't know if this is on this or not, makeup days as needed. I mean, it would just happen. And I mean, it wouldn't change the calendar at all. It would just, we would take exams after Christmas is what it would happen.
We'd have to have another meeting to approve a new calendar at that point.
Because it has a state minimum of 1,025 hours. And I know with Irene in Florence, you know, we had to, we had to make some adjustments and and I'm trying to remember, I think we might have had a special call meeting or we might have had a
And we put in additional days anyway. So we usually, if you notice, we don't even, we haven't made up a day in a while, knock on wood again. You know, when we had a, gosh, what was it? We had something in September.
Tropical storm.
Tropical storm. Anyway, we didn't have to make it up because we're over our days. And we do that on purpose because if nothing happens, then what's the worst thing that's happening? We have additional instructional time. But because of then being, let's say we missed three, four, or five days, we would not want the teachers to have now three, four, or five days less time to teach instruction. So we would have to move it then. And we'd get back together and talk about it.
And Ms. Parks, this is Rachel.
Oh, wow. Like, where did they come from?
Just a reminder that COVID, we can cope with a couple of days here and there a lot easier than we would before because we all had to hear how to educate kids virtually anyway.
That's right.
I'm gonna make a recommendation on this. I think since a lot of us have been contacted by parents, and the ones that contacted me, it was the 20 days. I think my recommendation, since we were not pressured to vote on it tonight, is to, with this new information, hopefully, parents that are listening or or we can go back and call the parents that contacted us and say, hey, it's not 20 days. It's gonna be more like seven days, then we can give a better explanation. Or if it's the pleasure of the board tonight to vote on this calendar, we can. But being that we're not pressured, I think it would be good for us to to kind of clarify some of that information with the concerns that parents have shared with us. Y'all's thoughts?
I'm following that.
I'm behind it too.
Can I ask the
And if that's okay unless y'all were
Is there anything that, like, power school-wise or scheduling-wise that's gonna mess us up by waiting another month?
No, if there's a decision by April.
By April, okay.
The more time I have, the better to make it work. But April's fine.
And Ms. Paxson, this is Rachel again. Just to let the board know, because I think it helps to have things put in context. Y'all are alone in trying to align your schedule. We had, just last week, there was one, two, three, four, five calendar bills filed in the North County Legislature looking to try to allow flexibility for schools to align their calendars with the community college calendars.
If that happened, this wouldn't be an issue because we could start earlier and then the semesters could be even, and we still get out before Christmas the way it used to be. But I digress.
So I think what I'm hearing from y'all, if we wait until April, that's okay?
If it was the latest as possible.
Yeah, I think we would vote on it in April if we don't vote on it tonight.
Or we have a special budget meeting, we might could vote on it then.
That we could, yeah.
If we feel like we've talked to enough people at that point.
Just with us meeting to be more intentional about where we schedule certain classes, making sure that we have that time to do the job at.
So at what point will you share it with your faculty? I mean, would we, would you want to share it with them before we vote on it or?
We haven't shared the actual calendar, but we have shared the differences and talking about the worst case scenario. We've shared the worst case scenario with them, and they are heavily in favor of the change.
I just don't want them to feel like they've not had input.
We can present the staff next week.
Do that. We can give you a copy of this. But make sure we have draft written across that. That's the only reason we're worried about getting out because draft, making sure people understand it's a draft. And, you know, because literally, it'll be on Facebook.
And they'll be planning vacations.
Which that really isn't gonna matter, like I said before, because the start date's the same. Christmas is a little different.
We try to reach out to the parents again to make sure all of them are informed, not just by social media.
Well, we do calls and ask them to do, I'm gonna be honest, a lot of them told me, it didn't matter to me. Like, it doesn't matter to me. Y'all know, that's, and I don't know if that's a lot of, a lot of them just say it doesn't matter. So whatever y'all think is best.
Reach out to the parents.
Yeah.
Just to make sure.
And they have.
I get the alert nows quite often from the high school.
I was gonna say, we
So I'm gonna say, put the whole board on the alert now, so they'll, yeah. I'm still amazed at how much you can get in a little amount of time every Sunday night. But for me personally, I would like, and I know some parents are listening tonight or if they're watching, where they've heard the discussion and hopefully they'll reach back out to me or I'll reach out to them and make sure, hopefully, they have a better understanding. And I think that's probably the same with some of the rest of you. Okay. Very good information. So we do have a special budget meeting where we could approve this, or we will definitely have it on our April agenda for approval. And thank y'all for all the work y'all have done.
They've worked really hard.
I think it would be a good idea to put it on one of those earlier meetings instead of waiting until April because
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think we're gonna come up with any changes. And so the earlier we vote on it, we want to give them chances to work on it as much as possible, so.
So it can be successful.
Right. Yep.
So I'd say put it on the agenda for that first, whatever first.
Okay, yep. And that'll give, that's plenty of time to reach back out to parents or parents to reach back out to us. All right. Thank y'all. Let's see. Do we want to do the resolution? I don't see why we couldn't do that tonight. We've had plenty of discussion about it.
Yeah, that's a yay or a nay. Either you guys wanna do that or not. If not, we'll just trash it, or we can do it and show support. As you see, a lot of districts have done this to show support for calendar flexibility all across the board, not just for what we're deciding tonight, but complete calendar flexibility as it really should be.
Yep. So if you remember, we discussed that at the last meeting about the resolution, and everybody's had a chance to see that. I think if we, I think it's a good thing for us to do. We've done this, and the board has done this in the past, resolutions. And a lot of times, the School Board Association will ask us to do that. But I think this is a good thing for us to do. So I support doing the resolution. And if it's the consensus of the board, then we do need a motion to do that, correct, Rachel?
You do need a motion. And let me just say, I would advise that we soften the language a little bit on the parts that say we can't complete the first semester until mid-January because it looks like we can do that, but we could definitely say it's a hardship. So there's some language in here that says because of the calendar law, we are unable to complete the first semester until mid to late January.
Is everyone following that?
Right, if we keep the days even as it stands right now. If we split the semesters straight down the middle.
Well, the law as we're currently implementing it, it does require that, yes. And so I understand what Rachel is saying. But the way that we've currently been trying to make the semesters equal, then it ends up being in January. So I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
With the amended language as
Yes.
Recommended by
I don't understand that amended language.
Okay, so
Because that, to me, that is a part of this. We can't, if we keep it like it is currently, we won't finish the first semester until the middle of January.
Right, but the law's not changing, but you are changing your calendar to have a way to do it by January, right? I mean, by December.
Okay, tell us what it should say.
So I think you could say in there, maybe what to do is to say, we can't, we can't have equal semesters unless we end in mid to late January. So either that or soften the language. Because I don't think, you're looking at adopting a calendar that has the first semester ending in winter. Right?
It's a cookie cutter from the other districts are using. I'll just, you know, but that's fine. We can do whatever. We're just gonna need to get the change, we can't sign it tonight then. We've got to redo it and
I think you can, if you can sign, you can give authority to amend that language and sign it tonight. Or sign it tomorrow. I can amend the language for you. But in light of what you're doing, what you adjusted in terms of the calendar, just say that either, that we can say where it says a late August start date means the schools with the Pamlico County School are unable to complete the first semester until mid to late January and maintain equal semesters.
So what your advice is, and maintain equal semesters? You ready to comment?
No, I'm just over this resolution. We've been dealing with it for two months.
I know. All right, so here's what Rachel's saying we can do. We can approve it with and maintain equal semesters, and we can sign it tonight. And then they can just make the corrections tomorrow, correct? Okay, so we have a motion to approve that as I just described. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. So we will, I will sign that tonight, and we'll get that included in and get that. So we need signatures from everyone tonight, correct? So everyone, yeah, after the meeting, we need everyone to stay and sign. And it's in here, okay? All right. Everyone hear that? Do not leave until you sign this piece of paper. Okay, moving on to 7.3. You know, we've had discussion at the last meeting for the approval of our trustee member for Pamlico Community College. We have one candidate, Ms. Sherry Mutter. So I will ask for a motion to approve Ms. Sherry Mutter to serve on the Pamlico County Board of Trustees as presented. Do we have any discussions?
So in terms of making that approval, are we also approving the process so we can introduce it to the college for future appointments? Because we discussed that as well.
Right. And Rachel, you were in that discussion. Do we need to create? I think my question that'll be is, do we need to create, and if we do, that's fine, a new policy that defines and outlines how we will, and which is what we were gonna do in this. We did have two candidates. One decided not to submit their letter of intent, so we left with one. Would that be a policy or would that just be a procedure? You're muted. You're muted.
Rachel, you're muted.
We can't read lips that well.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. So you could do it either way. I would probably suggest a policy so that the board directs it. Or if you want to give the administration the authority to direct it, you could do it as regulation.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I just want to make sure that the process is consistent and we, you know, we understand what it is in the future.
So I think what I understood that to be is that we were using what has been sort of the informal process for this decision with the understanding that the board wanted to look moving forward at a more formalized process that you would adopt through policy.
Right.
Just for expediency in terms of getting someone there. The board wanted to consider what the policy ought to look like moving forward.
So would it be too much for me to ask our current policy committee to work with Rachel in drafting this? And I think the intent of what we discussed at last meeting is having candidates submit a letter of intent. And then if we have multiple candidates, then we either would ask them to a meeting or a special meeting. Or we could then ask questions or kind of just get the feel of why they would like to serve as trustee. Jamie, you okay with that?
Yeah.
So the current policy committee, you know, there's Mr. Dudley, Mr. McCotter, Ms. Dunbar. Is that asking, is that putting too much on y'all to help develop that policy that we can then put into our other policies as we approve them? Are y'all okay with that?
Sure.
I am. Yes.
Everyone with the board okay with that?
Could Rachel help us with that?
Yeah, that's what I said, with Rachel's assistance. Yeah.
It would be my honor, Ms. Dunbar.
All right. You okay with that, Jamie?
Yeah.
I think that we'll get a policy in place, and then that'll, moving forward, we'll have a set procedure. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve Ms. Mutter.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Yep. It's kind of personal to me because it, you know, but I'm glad you're filling that seat. You'll do a good job for us. Thank you. All right, 7.4. Everyone has got a copy of our dates for our 2023-24 board meetings so that fiscal year ends in June, so July starts the new year. So you see the scheduled dates for July through June. At 6:00 PM. Any questions on these? Any discussion?
I'm good with them except for the July one. I'm hoping that we can, like last summer, not have the July. Because I'll be out of town for the July one.
New board members too, that often, well, it hasn't in the past, but until last year, we have several meetings at the end of June for budget. And so we were doing personnel stuff then, and it worked out really nicely. We'd kind of covered everything. And we really didn't even have to have a July meeting, so we were able to cancel that, which really worked well for vacations and stuff. That won't be our goal. But if it works out, that's a nice little bonus. That won't be our goal, but if it works out, that's a nice little bonus, so.
So if there's no questions or any further discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. 7.5, and Dr. Patrick, I didn't mention you in the addition, or as assisting with the new policy, but I know you'll be helping with our policy committee with that and Ms. Higgs. So that's my segue to bringing you in for Agenda Item 7.5.
I would like to agree with you. First item of the board meeting tonight, item 7.5, the second reading of policy 30-30, citizenship and heritage education. This is the second reading tonight, so asking you two about that policy.
Right, everyone had a copy of that policy in our packet. Are there any questions? Again, this is the second reading, so I'll need a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion's second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries.
Item 7.5, second reading tonight, is the first reading of policy 30-30, or doing the vote. That policy has been modified to include specific language regarding the requirement for doing the vote. So that's in your packet for the first reading. If you have any questions or suggestions or anything, please contact me when you make additional corrections prior to coming to the board next month for the second reading.
Any questions on this policy now? I know Mr. Giff, you had some questions last time.
All my concerns have been ratified. I appreciate the communication that Urban and I had.
Good. Any other questions or comments at this time? Okay, again, this is first reading. So this will be brought up at our next meeting, second reading for approval. Thank you. All right, that brings us to you, Mr. Dudley.
Okay. I move that the Pamlico County Board of Education enters to closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 1232G and GS 115C-402. Confidential personnel matters as provided in NCGS 143-318.11A1, 5 and 6, and 115C-319. And to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute 143-318.11A3.
I have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we will be going into closed session, 8:05. Thank you to everyone tonight.